Location locations shall be constructed and dedicated as shown on the master plan. The second request is for a conditional use permit to allow a planned housing development for detached, single-family development within the R1 district with a maximum of 60 units and a maximum density of four units per acre. The proposed plan also includes sidewalks, roads, public utilities such as water, sewer, and stormwater management, which will be constructed by the developer per town standards and dedicated for public use where appropriate. I have provided a table in the staff report that details deviations from the R1 district standards that have been requested by the applicant as part of the planned housing development. Generally, the applicant is requesting decreased minimum lot area, decreased setbacks, and decreased minimum lot widths. Their proposed density is within the R1 district standard. Items for commissions consideration may include open space, traffic impacts, and existing utility infrastructure. The applicant has offered the following conditions. The property shall be developed in general conformance with the master plan submitted dated November 19, 2024. The approved conditional use permit shall only be for the specific, single-family detached residential use as described in this application. And the two future road connection locations shall be constructed and dedicated as shown on the master plan. Planning Commission may wish to consider imposing a timeframe for construction and dedication of the future road connections mentioned in condition number three. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. That was a nice summary. Okay, now I'll open it up to the public for a comment on both A and B. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. Steve Simonas with Ballser &amp; Associates, AD College Street here in Christiansburg. Thank you all for the time. Happy New Year. It's the first time I've seen you this year, so happy New Year. So I'd like to thank Devin for the introduction and the follow-through on the application itself. I will touch through the details of it. Devin, would you be able to put up ours? So as you mentioned, 17.7 acres of this property right here is currently in the town. There's 1.06 acres that you can see in the little triangle there on the left-hand side that is currently in Montgomery County. Life Pacific University, Cross Point, they did a boundary line adjustment a few years ago, so this property here is in town. So it's a little strange. It kind of comes up and jogs the corporate boundary right there. So we have requested Town Council and the Board of Supervisors to engage in a friendly boundary line adjustment. Town Council has moved forward with that process. Montgomery County Board of Supervisors voted to move ahead with it as well. Now we're just through the actual public hearing process. So those public hearings will happen, I believe, towards the end of this month for both boards. So we've provided the documents, the plats, that they need in order to move that through, and then it'll have to go through the court system. So the area we're looking at is this total of about 18.76 acres at the terminus, existing terminus of Summit Ridge Road. Right now, the property is currently just one, single-family house sitting right up here on the knoll. So this is just a closer look at it. You can see, this is the existing water and sewer that you'll see here that comes down from Cross Point or Life Pacific through the property. There's a pump station on Life Pacific's property that handles that sewage and pumps up through this property and ties into the town's gravity sanitary sewer here in Summit Ridge. And then there's a 10-inch water line that comes through the property as well. Those lines will stay in place with this development. You'll see in our layout that we've got roads that run along that section now. So again, the existing house, and important to note, the existing house is going to stay with this proposal. So that's one of the reasons we've looked at some different lot sizes, because we're keeping a large lot right here. Two little outbuildings here would be removed. So this is the master plan, so 60 total lots, as noted. As you'll see, connection off of Summit Ridge Road right here, that would come up. And then these were the two locations, this point right here, which would tie to the west into Life Pacific in the future, and one to the south that could tie into this location here. I'm going to go back one. If that location is ever tied in in the future, if this property ever develops, there could be a connection out to the Rose Hill subdivision out here as well. So currently, the right-of-way of Summit Ridge comes and terminates right here. So that tie-in location as a 50-foot right-of-way was dedicated for this future road extension as part of the overall subdivision when it was developed back in the late '70s, early ' '80s. Briarwood Drive, I just want to show everybody here, Briarwood Drive did not connect. So you all have probably seen this in other projects in those old subdivisions where they kind of come up right to the edge and they stop, and they don't allow for that connectivity. So Briarwood is a cul-de-sac, so there is no possibility to connect, make that connection in there right there. You'll see two house lots right there, and that's the property line. So that's the reason we have the cul-de-sac here at the end at lots 33 and 34. Due to the various lot sizes you'll see here, so as part of the R1, single-family, we've asked, as Devin mentioned, a conditional use permit for a PR to allow for some smaller lot sizes in here, and I'll speak to that here. So our minimum lot size is 7,500 square feet. The normal lot size for an R1 district is 10,000 square feet. You do have the compact option, which is allowed in code to come down to 8,500 square feet, depending on some other parameters you would lay into your subdivision. But we chose to go the planned route, the planned housing route with this development here. And you'll see, we've got some smaller setbacks in some of these, well, shown on all of them, but primarily, they would be used on some of the smaller lots that are in that 7,500-foot range. But you'll see in here, we've got a lot of lots that are much bigger than that. So these lots you'll see in here, six, seven, eight, nine, some of these up along I-181. Those are your lots that are in that 7,500-square-foot range. You've got some just based on the way the road aligns and the way the property is bounded here that get up 10,000, 12,000, 15,000 square feet. You've got some back here that are up around 18,000 square-foot lots. And then the house lot here, you can see, it was important that we maintained the vegetation that's up there, kept the house itself. The new driveway would pull in off of the road, and that house right there sits on a little acre. So when you look at all that, including the open space we have dedicated for stormwater management, we've got two drainage breaks. You know, this is a high point, so we've got part of the property that breaks back down to 81. The other piece breaks down to the south. So we have open space in two sections of stormwater management that would have to be designed to state and local standards. So the way the lots themselves will lay out, because of the different lot sizes, the different lot depths, and some of the widths in here, it gives the flexibility for the builder to build one level or two-level homes. So part of what he wants to do here is have some single-level living. We talk about that in a lot of our applications, so have the ability to do bedrooms on the main floor, but also with the grade and some of your wider lots here, you could do a more typical two-story home, and some could have a basement as well. As Devin mentioned, public sidewalks, so these will be public roads built to town standards, 30-foot wide roads, curb and gutter, and sidewalks on both sides of the street. An HOA will be set up for this, obviously, as all of our newer subdivisions to maintain our stormwater management areas. The town itself, since this would be public road, would be maintaining the road and the sidewalks. Trash would be just normal cans, you know, town service as a normal, single-family lot. Parking would be in individual driveways, and then street parking would be allowed as allowed by town code. Water and sewer, we did have a couple conversations with town engineering on water and sewer layouts. So you can see our preliminary water and sewer here as it loops through and ties back into a couple different locations here to make sure we've looped the water line and looped, or brought the sewer line in a couple different locations. Those existing lines I talked about, those are the green and blue lines right here, so you can see we're staying out of those. We didn't want to disrupt service to any of the existing homes or to the Bible College either. So those lines are staying in place. We've looked at depth, so we shouldn't have to monkey with the elevations of those either. We should be able to grade the roads in and everything stay operational throughout construction. These lots would be, these homes would be for sale. The idea is, because we've got different lot sizes, different house styles, you know, we can hit a wide range of pricing, so the idea is somewhere in the 300 to 400 range. So trying to keep those on the lower end of where the market is with some of the newer homes coming in right now is where our client would like to have sales prices. And the last piece I want to touch on, and Devin mentioned this, is this does show in the comprehensive plan, you know, as residential and the future land use map, it was clear that the idea was to expand residential development here in this side. And as Devin also mentioned, the county shows this area as an urban expansion area. That's the county's designation on areas right there at the periphery of the towns, kind of touched the towns of Blacksburg and Christiansburg, where you've got an infrastructure, water, sewer, and roads, where they see some of the growth potential in the county itself. So I would be happy to answer any questions. Chair Johnson or I can take a seat and answer them after some of our neighbors have spoken.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak on the two items?
Good evening. I'm Steve Huppert. I'm on 440 Summit Ridge. And I have a couple of questions concerning the road development of the area. Now, the way I understand it, it appears that Summit Ridge is going to be the only road leading into this development. And I was wondering if it could be, if you know this area over there near Route 8, I was thinking that maybe that would be good if they could have, you know, two ways in and out. And my reason on this is Summit Ridge right now is not in that good a shape right now, really. And if we start bringing in construction material, you know, for 60 homes, how is that going to affect the road? And then eventually, when it is developed, there'll be the equivalent of 120 cars a day, thinking two for each one, okay? What on the road effect it will have on the road? So now, I know that the contractors are not responsible for Summit Ridge, and that, but I was thinking that, I believe that there is a factor here where you can talk to the engineering people and say, hey, maybe two or three years after the building of these homes, we can maybe put it on a list to have Summit Ridge redone and repaved, because I think it's going to need it then. I don't know if I have anything else, really. I think you covered the cost of the homes, and, but I think that the big thing that I am aware of is maybe trying to make it two ways to come in and out of the development and to trying to do something to take care of Summit Ridge down the road. And if there are any questions, I'd be glad to try to take a shot at them. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else wishing to speak on this?
Carrie Bradshaw, I live at 475 Summit Ridge Road in Christiansburg. I echo the same question that Steve has mentioned with not just Summit Ridge. Summit Ridge down on our end seems wide and could maybe take some of the load of an additional 60 homes. I would say the entry into Summit Ridge is much more congested. It has sometimes cars that park on the street, trailers, boats, different things as you enter in the beginning of Summit Ridge. I don't believe that it could support this kind of addition at this point, and I would hope that the Planning Commission would consider that another access point be available before this project would come underway. This would be a lot of stress on Summit Ridge itself with that much development, and that would be a major concern for the residents that live there. One question that my family had was, what is the timeline for this project? I think maybe in this presentation, it was mentioned that it would be in stages. What is an anticipated start date? When we were talking about these questions at home, we thought that there would be a loop available coming off of Briarwood. And so now that that's not going to be an option, then, you know, I really think that's really important to be addressed if it's not going to be done in stages. So what's the anticipated start date, and then can there be some other road options considered? I also would stress that, over the years, I think there's a real funneling when you are going down this very straight road of Summit Ridge and you look at the entry into the Riedinger Farm, it really invites you to speed. I don't really know that people realize they're doing it, but I would say that people that are in construction, they got a lot to do, they've got their big equipment, they're coming in, it's a residential zone, and it would be really easy for it to get really busy and really fast. And so I don't, again, that really has to do with the streets and what's, and what could potentially be up there on that property. So I would like for some of those questions to be answered.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
John Wilburn, 320 Briarwood Drive. I live one house deep in that cul-de-sac, and it's going to change the view shed substantially having a much denser development. I could probably see about 20 or 30 of those for my backyard alone. So is there any plan to put any trees along lots 34 and 33 on the east side there? That would make an awfully big difference to those of us, because I've been on that street for 22 years. I'm not saying that entitles me to anything, but I know that I would much rather have that than looking at oak tree off my back porch every day. So, just my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Patty Hall. I live at 435 Summit Ridge, and I've been there 35 years. It's a very pedestrian-friendly street, a lot of dog walking and people just walking their infants in strollers and just... Keep in mind that that is a very safe neighborhood, and that may be completely taken away. If you extend it all the way to Route 8, then you're going to invite Route 8 traffic to come through to take a shortcut, too. So just bear that in mind, that we have a place in Reiner, and we would definitely use that as a shortcut. So we won't be the only ones trying to get off Route 8 to come to Christiansburg. So that's something to maintain. The other is an engineering question. The infrastructure that is there with the water and sewer, is it going to have to be replaced? I mean, it's probably 40-plus years old, so does it need to be upgraded? Is that, will it be able to handle the new load of 16 new houses? I think that's a question that needs to be identified in addition to just traffic.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to go ahead and close that part of the meeting, A and B. And I'm going to go ahead and move on to item C. Stick around, we're going to have a discussion point after that, and we will be asking some questions as well and getting you some answers. So, item C, conditional use permit request by Shaw Development LLC. Property owner and applicant to allow for two-family dwelling in a general business district, B3 zoning district on property located on the northwest corner of Roanoke Street and Craig Street Northeast, identified as tax parcel 527-46-5B, parcel ID 170239, and consisting of approximately .31 acres. The property is designated as business on the future land use map of Christiansburg. Staff, can you give us a little quick overview?
Sure. The applicant is seeking approval for a conditional use permit to allow residential use specifically one-two-family dwelling within the general business district, B3. The proposed development will adhere to the R3 development standards. The property is not located within either the 100 or 500-year flood hazard area. If this request is approved in accordance with Section 426-623A1 of the Christiansburg Town Code, the applicant will be required to submit a full site plan to the town for review and approval. That's everything.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone here wishing to speak on that item? Okay. Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close that part of the meeting and go back and open it up to discussion among the commissioners. We've had some questions tonight by the public. I think we need to get some answers on that before we move forward. So I'll open it up to the commissioners. Ask away.
I think I would love it if Steve would take a moment to respond to the questions, because then that might answer some of my questions, but then prompt more questions.
And make it easier. Exactly.
Yeah, let's just get a summary of those first.
Thank you, Steve.
So to Mr. Huppert's question, I don't disagree that having a conversation with engineering and public work staff as far as seeing when that paving schedule is for Summit Ridge, I'm not aware of that. I'm not sure when that is, but that's certainly something I'm happy to look into as well. As far as the two ways in and out, you know, we touched on this, or I touched on this during our presentation. I think realistically, you know, I'm not sure if our neighbors want to hear this or not, but I think realistically, this would be a more feasible way to get out. I'm not sure what the Bible College's long-term plans for redevelopment are. That's a short, easy connection over to their parking lot, but again, that would take, you know, that's not a public road that extends all the way up through there. So it's, you'd be going through parking lots and drive aisles, so that's a whole different realm of things to get into. So I don't see this happening anytime soon. You know, this connection sometime in the future, if that lower parcel were to develop, you know, maybe that's that second connection out, but again, that's taking you back to Franklin Street. Ms. Bradshaw's question on timeline, so if things moved exactly according to schedule at this point, we would have Town Council action at the end of this, at the end of this month, into February. We still have to get subdivision and site plans approved, which will take six to seven, eight months before you could even start construction. This would be built in phases. Typically, we would do all the infrastructure work, so all the mass grading, water, sewer, stormwater management at one time, and get a section of the road in and just build, you know, section by section. So over the course of 60 lots, that could be, that could easily be a couple years of construction.
And I will ask, I know that the builder has several other developments, kind of things that are happening now. Is the intent to start this as soon as he has approval, or is his intent to sit on it until he finishes a project or two, which might take a couple more years?
He would like to go ahead and move on this one. The townhouse projects he's working on right now, they're moving along quite well on those, so he's, he wants to have something for his crews and his folks to move into work-wise. So this is why we moved ahead with this one. As you all remember, we had one previously a few months ago that was not going to move forward. So he'd like to move forward with a single-family. So that's roughly what the timeline would be. So, you know, end of year, end of year best case before we'd have full plan approval probably and ready to start construction. Likely wouldn't start construction in the dead winter going into '26, so it may be spring before you actually break ground. Mr. Wilburn's question as far as view shed and screening, I'd be happy to ask Mr. Woody about that. He usually does a really good job landscaping his properties anyway, so we can certainly talk about that. We have those discussions back and forth on projects, whether we want to screen a new project from neighbors or leave it open so the neighborhoods can grow together. But if that's something that this neighborhood would be interested in, I can certainly bring that up to him and follow up with Planning Commission and Council on that piece of it. And the last piece, as far as the water and sewer infrastructure from Ms. Hall, we did have those discussions about water and sewer with the town engineers. Depending upon where we tied in, they wanted to be sure that they were going, that all the capacity was going to be there, that the lines themselves were going to be adequate. We've provided our estimated water and sewer flows as part of our application to the town. We haven't heard anything negative back, so we're assuming at this point the lines are okay. I would have thought by this point, we would have heard some response from staff if there were any concerns about where we were showing our tie-in locations.
And let me ask you about that, too. I imagine, so you're talking about the pressure, but maybe one of the questions was too, was just the age in the sense of like the quality, degrading. Have y'all, I imagine you'll take a look at that when you're in there, if you need to upgrade those pipes, if any of them look like they're falling apart? Because I think that was maybe what the question was about the age.
Yeah, if there's anything that we would be directly connecting to, so we would connect into this manhole right here. If that manhole is busted up, if we can't, you know, when we tap into it, if we can't get it to pressurize, we'd have to replace that manhole. As far as lines downstream, we're not aware of anything. If the town, you know, if the town has something in their public improvement or their CIP budgets to replace any downstream lines, that would be part of the town projects. We're not aware of any failing lines or anything that's deteriorating in there.
Thank you. I think that was what you're getting at.
So Steve, on the other two road connections, if I understood you, the one is mostly unlikely going to happen anytime soon, going over to the, is it the Life?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you can see, I mean, there's a little access road that comes up here, that's their parking lot, and we're showing that stub road that would tie in right here. So if the college were ever to redevelop or revision what they wanted to be out there, there could be a public road, you know, if they wanted to put a public road or some development on their, on their property, we could have that connection, but, you know, it's, who knows from a timeline standpoint if and when that would ever happen.
So you haven't had any discussions with them at this point?
No, no, not as far as any future development out there.
And if I understood it correctly, the other connection would depend on the development of the other property?
That's correct. Yep, this property right here.
Which, as to best of your knowledge, nothing is planned right now.
It's the same family. So Mr. Woody owns a portion of this, and his son actually owns this and lives down here. This was, this was a big chunk of property that was purchased several years ago by...
Four or five, maybe?
Yeah, a gentleman in Blacksburg had it before, and then he moved and sold it to Eric. So we don't have any plans or layouts or anything on this right now. You know, again, it's in that same residential, you know, transition or residential expansion area. So yeah, I mean, that is residentially, it's good residential property for some time in the future, so that's why I'm saying I think that connection realistically is probably, is probably more logical than one up here.
So if I sum up...
But again, that would still be a long ways away, because we talked about...
Yeah, that's where I was going, yeah.
You know, from the timeline, just on this project, you know, so it would be several years.
So if I sum up the additional two ways in and out, most likely not going to happen through the Life University, and not anytime soon on the one below. So the concerns about all the traffic on that particular road going in, Summer Ridge Road, are real, and I would ask staff to take a look and see what engineering plans are for that road in the future, to see if there's any plans for expansion. I understand it is, Mike, you wrote on it, you said it was pretty wide, but any additional information on that from engineering would be great.
And I know Chair Johnson, I know Planning Commission knows this, but, you know, from a plant, from a transportation planning standpoint, you know, if this were in the county, if this were a Montgomery County project, you know, VDOT would require us to put in these stub roads, you know, so this is good planning from just an overall planning and a transportation planning standpoint. So it may be years off, but, you know, no different than the forethought put into Summit Ridge Road, stopping there and not having, you know, another cul-de-sac to allow that future expansion. So it may be a little ways off, but it's there for the next opportunity.
Do you happen to know why they put the cul-de-sac in? I mean, was that, because I'm just saying, but the person who lives over there, that's a really long drive in over there, so curious about the planning when that happened.
And since Stomp's not here, I'll ask the question.
Yeah, there you go. Fire trucks.
Fire trucks.
You knew it was coming, right?
I knew it was coming. These are all town roads, I mean, these are all built, built and designed to town standards, so they'll have the appropriate radii, you know, and plenty of clearance for the trucks to get around the intersections, and our fire hydrants would be located, and I'm not sure if we've got them shown on here, but they'd be located and spaced along the road, you know, as the town requires. along the road, you know, as the town requires. And the cul-de-sac is a full standard cul-de-sac for fire truck, you know, school bus.
School bus, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. And one thing I saw on the chart that we did, that you did, it was very nice. It's good to see it put side by side. Steve, you said minimum lot size seventy-five hundred? And I saw seventy, seven thousand on your chart. Okay. All right. And the question along with that chart is, there was, I didn't see any open space in this development, other than the center house. They have a lot of open space, but I take it that would not be open to any of the housing units to use that. Storm drain, understand that would be open, but not necessarily a open space.
Yeah, and we haven't sized the stormwater management areas, you know, based on, you know, when we get into the engineering, you know, they might not have to be this big. You know, we'll put them right up against the property lawn with our embankment and then back it off from there. So as we've done some other developments, if we've got some open space left over, you know, in these areas here. But again, it's important to realize, these are all single-family houses, so everybody's got their backyard. You know, so the smallest home here, the smallest lot size is still greater than some of the lots that we did at Kensington or some of the single-family lots at New River Village. So seventy-five hundred square feet is still a, you know, a reasonable lot size.
What size is that? It's less than a quarter.
It is.
But I can't do my math, it's less than that.
Yeah, I've got it here. Actually had it written down, Jennifer, in my notes.
That might help.
Point one-seven. Yep, so point one-seven up to about point four. You know, I think these up here, those bigger ones that are about eighteen thousand square feet.
Sidewalks, walking trail?
Sidewalks on both sides of the street.
Both sides?
Both sides. Yes, ma'am.
And I guess where I was going, and you went right there, Steve, limited open space, but yet they do have front and rear yards, but yet the standard R-one district usually has a front yard of thirty-five feet and a rear yard of thirty-five feet, which is pretty substantial. And of course, I would say, yes, kids play in the front yard, backyard.
Right.
But on your proposal here, it looks like front yard's down to twenty feet and the rear yard is down to fifteen. And I'm taking it that that's probably the smallest properties that you're talking about.
Yeah, that, you know, that would most impact the smaller properties here. And again, we gave kind of a typical building footprint of a thirty-five by seventy-foot house. So I believe the depth on these, I measured this before I left the office, it was over a hundred and twenty feet in depth. So you've still got fifty feet on the back and, you know, between the back and the front, if you built that bigger footprint. And that bigger footprint would be if you did that one level living, more of a patio home style, where it's a little bit deeper. So that's why we put kind of that typical footprint here, that we could get that in there. I had an image, and I didn't bring that and I apologize, but I had an image showing that footprint sitting on the lots. But you would still have, you know, you would still have usable space in the front and the backyards, and enough room on the front to get a couple cars off the street, which is required by code.
Have you considered, just given the number of houses and really walkability to other spaces, like putting like a playground in there or something for young families? I mean, I know that you were saying that they have, they're residential, but I'm just thinking that could really build like community
There's a town, there's a town playground.
Town park.
Right there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just as you get into the subdivision on Summit Ridge, there's a town park. And it's a nice park, too.
Right there.
Right there, okay, good.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
There's no parking for it?
I have a question, but first pursuant to Virginia Code, section two dot two dash three-one-one-two, section B-one, and two dot two dash three-one-one-five, section H. I am declaring that I am a member of one of three or more businesses that may be affected by agenda items four, A, B, and C, as an owner of electrical and electronic security contractor. I am able to participate in the discussion and voting on this matter fairly objectively and in the public interest. Steve, the staff report mentioned that they're, talking about the existing four sewer main and the existing water line, and that there would be a fifteen-foot easement required centered on both of those items, which may affect lots thirty-five, thirty-six, fifty-eight, fifty-nine. Has that been taken into account? Do you guys have anything?
It has.
Okay.
Yep.
So they'll just be in the setbacks, basically?
They'll be in the setbacks. And you can see, these lots right here are some of those bigger ones anyway that have more width.
Okay.
Commissioners, more questions?
I, oh, did something, did you have one?
No, go ahead.
There were recommendations made by staff in the beginning for us to consider. I feel like one of them was something about timeline of construction of the road, like a start and end or something. Can you remind me what you?
For the two connecting, the other two connecting. Wasn't that right? So, so nothing for Summit Ridge Road, but for the potential future roads, which
Okay.
we really have established that the one to the left is not really a feasible road at this point in time. And the one below is going to depend on the development of that property, which is no plans.
And this one here, obviously, we'll have to go in in order to have frontage for lots eighteen and nineteen. You know, this one, you know, if it's a condition that the commission is interested in, I mean, this could be, this would be, I mean, this is where you would start your development. So this could go in in phase one. I mean, we'd be fine conditioning that if you want to add that in, that it would be built with the phase one construction.
There was something mentioned about engineering also. Going back to ask engineering to look at something.
Paving schedule.
The paving schedule, yeah. Anything other than that? Was it the sewer or?
I was gonna, I was gonna ask, there's a question more for the residents. Is the stormwater management there, is it adequate right now? As far as, do you have a lot of blockages or any?
The water flow?
Water flow, water pressure? Okay.
So sometimes storm runoff and drainage ponds can help situations also.
Yeah, so that's why I was asking.
Yeah, I would add on that, Mr. Clark. Believe everything in this subdivision is just asphalt and roadside ditch. There's no curb and gutter. So
Okay.
Ours will have curb and gutter. So everything that's within ours will catch in our drop inlets and direct it towards our stormwater management. So all of this, you know, all of this property will get picked up in our stormwater. We won't be sheeting water over to the neighbors.
Okay.
I'm actually gonna, I actually had that written down right here to ask about that. So I can't, I can't commit to that. I wouldn't want to commit to that tonight, but I will ask that question as far as if that's, you know, if that's a possibility.
Can you say that location again? Where'd you say, at the temporary road?
Coming in, yeah, coming in here.
Okay.
You know, if there's a way to do that.
I did have a question. With it being that close to the interstate, what's the sound level like over there? And is there any screenage or blockage for the houses that are going to be right there next to eighty-one?
Yeah, it would be similar to what these folks are.
But they'll be, you don't have any plans for additional blockage or?
No, not right now. I mean, you do have some buffer there, you know, you've got some of the existing tree buffer along that section of eighty-one.
It's not gonna help.
Yeah.
There's no sound barriers or anything?
Yeah.
I know. I'm always like, how do people get the sound barrier? You know, they're putting them up on, and I'm like, if I lived in a house, I'd want the sound barrier right there.
Further down eighty-one, you'll see the sound barriers all the time.
Would that be a VDOT issue? Yeah, most likely, off of eighty-one.
I think they only put them
They have to qualify with so many homes.
Gotcha.
They have to qualify for that.
I've always heard that if you build it after, if you build after the interstate, then you're on your own.
Gotcha.
Yeah, but like, right now, the work they're doing in Salem, they're adding those sound walls, even though the houses are existing, so.
So to your point, maybe the adding sixty-one homes
Maybe could qualify.
might bring you up to a qualify.
I'm sorry to interrupt. If you all, if you have a question or anything, if we can hand you a microphone so that we can get it in the minutes. Devin's back there. If you're gonna ask a question or anything, she'll hand you a microphone.
And the same goes, if you do take the microphone, please state your name and address. Sure.
Hi, my name is
Most likely, Mr. Hubbard, yeah, most likely we'd be starting here. You know, we'd be working our way in. We haven't discussed exactly which lots we'd start on first, but realistically, I mean, the whole, the whole site, again, will be graded and worked up for development. Which houses he actually starts on, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but we would likely start in this area. You know, certainly want to get it to a point where the road's built and constructed and, you know, this house would be, would be ready to rent or sell, you know, right away. So we'd want to get access to that as quickly as we could.
But basically you're selling, right?
Yep.
How many bedrooms are they? Were you looking variety of?
Yeah, a variety, probably of threes and fours.
Threes and fours, okay.
I think I know what I was leading to on the engineering. It was, again, Summer Ridge Road, not only the paving, but the construction of it. Could it, town engineers take a look at it to the extent of, we're going to have some pretty heavy equipment going in and out of there. And I do know that there is, sorry, I think there is a town ordinance that they can't come out there with trucks with mud and go all through your neighborhood, and that's got to be all cleaned out. So, and if there is a dust concern coming out of there, they have to put some kind of gravel down so that your houses are not going to be, your street is not going to be full of mud, and then the dust from this development is not going to be coming off the, with the big trucks coming your way. If I said anything wrong, staff, tell me. Okay. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Rod Hall, four thirty-five Summit Ridge Road. It's my understanding that state law requires two access points for a subdivision with over fifty lots. And if you read twenty-four VAC thirty ninety-two, fifty specifically outlines connectivity requirements, stating that large subdivisions should have at least two connections to existing public streets or other subdivisions to enhance emergency access and traffic. So is this something that's required in the town of Christiansburg? Or is this just VDOT requirement? And why would we not be in alignment with the state of Virginia regulations?
Steve, do you know offhand?
I'd have to read that section of the code, but typically, you know, typically, clicker's dead. Typically, VDOT, if you have limited access points, if you're providing those additional areas of connectivity, that's what we'll throw VDOT into saying, yes, you're meeting the intent of providing that connectivity. We can certainly look at that, at that VAC section and follow back up.
And staff, you don't know offhand, do you? Okay. Yeah, that'd be good if you can look at that, Steve. So I've got a couple points here. Engineering to take a look at the road, engineering, town engineering to take a look at the paving. Steve, also the possibility of some trees along the backside of, I can't read it, fifty-five, fifty-six or?
Thirty-three, thirty-four.
Okay. Now you know my vision. So possibly tree along that backside. Let's see, what was the other ones that we had?
Work entrance.
Work entrance, right, thank you. Anything else that-
And in the code, the law about entrances.
Yes, right, right. And anything else we could do, I think it was mentioned that there is a, I'll paraphrase it in my own words, a pretty good straight runway that you can get up to some pretty good speeds there. Is there anything that the town can do with construction equipment or anything to address that situation? Yeah.
Speed bump?
Speed bumps.
Equipment would tear the speed bumps to pieces, wouldn't it?
Good.
For the, for the equipment, they would, yeah.
I don't think that would be good for anybody.
So I just-
Bring them to the street committee?
Yeah, that might be good, just to make sure that we're addressing all the comments tonight. Yes.
I'm Harriet Bradshaw, four seventy-five Summit Ridge Road. I would just ask the planning commission to consider Summit Ridge Road, being the only access point for such a large development, would not be adequate. And that you all would consider some of the other road development before the project would begin.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that's why we were asking the question on the timing of the other two access roads. And so that is a concern as well. Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant, Steve? Okay, all right. What do we feel we need to do at this point? About one more? Yep.
Hello, Bruce Jennings from three sixty-five Summer Ridge Road. We have a lot of children that's in the area, and I see you've got these two retaining ponds. Are you going to construct fence around those to keep children out?
They won't have water in the full time. They'll be dry ponds. They'll only have water on the perimeter. And we're not required by state code against those.
The HMO you were talking about that's required in here is that strictly for these, this development? It's not going to bleed into our?
That's correct. Yep. The homeowners association would just be for this amount.
And is there access to that diagram you have there?
Yeah, it's on the town. If you want to give the town your email address, I'm sure they can send it or I'd be happy to send it to you as well.
Thank you.
Good questions. Thank you. Okay. Sure, go ahead.
Harriet Williams, three twenty Summit Ridge Road. We probably are in one of the original houses of Summit Ridge. And increased traffic on Summit Ridge would really be a detriment to the community because getting off of Summit Ridge onto South Franklin can be hard at times. And with the increased traffic just from the pool during the summer, you'll have a backup. And if there's construction vehicles in line to get onto South Franklin, it's impossible to get to Tannure or to Calhoun to work. For all of these hundred-and-twenty people or how many going to work, there's no way you can come down Summit Ridge and go South Franklin without a stoplight.
Gotcha. Okay. Great. So commissioners, what are our thoughts? We have some open questions?
Yep, I feel great waiting until our next meeting to make a decision, get some answers.
I concur with that as well. And staff and Steve, you guys have the questions and concerns that we have. So what we'll do at this point is we're going to prolong this to our next meeting. And at that point in time, we'll get the questions answered, a little more input. So I suggest that you guys come back to our next meeting, which will be February eighteenth.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. However, also, I would encourage you guys to go to town council public hearing, which is Tuesday, February twenty-fifth. So that'll be your chance to speak again. And maybe even by then, of course, well, yes, hopefully by then, because our meeting is the eighteenth, we'll have some further answers to your questions, and maybe we'll have a little bit more to share with you. And, okay.
Do you mind if I add something there?
Please.
And I would just say, when you go to town council, so in planning commission, we're a little bit more free-flowing with the comments and questions from the audience, mainly audience and
Thank you.
from the citizens, mainly because we want to know what your questions and comments are. So it helps us to filter through, talk with the applicants. So we have a little bit more looseness there because we want to make sure we have all the information. So by the time it goes to town council, the applicant is set up and ready to go. When you go to town council, they'll be very strict. You get your five minutes at the podium, and there is no speaking, three minutes from the podium, but there's no speaking. So just make sure if you want to go to town council after our next one, just make sure you have your comments all in order. And hopefully by then, too, with two planning commission meetings, you've heard enough, you know what your concerns are, what has been addressed or has not been addressed. But just a heads up for what town council meetings look like if you've not been to one before. Is that?
Perfect. No, that's perfect, because I, you stole my thunder.
Well, you've said it before, so.
Well, and, and, and yeah, just to speak on that subject, too, I mean, we appreciate you coming out here tonight and sharing your you coming out here tonight and sharing your thoughts and concerns. So at least we can do is respect you and, and let you speak. Okay, with that, I'm going to move on to the open concerns and questions that we have on the conditional use permit for the Shaw Development LLC. You guys are welcome to stick around, or you can leave.
Feelings are hurt, but that's fine. You shouldn't be too sad.
Okay.
Thank you all, have a great night.
Commissioners? Questions?
I don't, just a comment. I mean, this, I think this fits with the general character. I mean, we've already got houses nearby and across, well, not right across the street, but, you know, technically it's B three, but I don't say, I don't have any problem with this.
I'm just curious, are the driveways going to be on Craig Street, both of them? Out of curiosity, do you know what's in the building on the left? What is that now?
That's.
Neither. Do you know, Steve? Nice. You're the two most knowledgeable men we have in the town, and yet neither one of you know.
I would love to know, because I drive by it all the time. So I'm always curious, like, what's in there?
It was being sold as a house, wasn't it? Yeah. Yeah. Remax had it for a while.
Yeah, I, honestly, I don't really have any questions either.
It's Roanoke Street.
Yeah.
It's Roanoke Street, so.
It does, mhm.
Yep. Well, are we satisfied to, to make a motion tonight on?
Let's go ahead and get one off the list.
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit.
I can second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
You don't have to come to the podium.
Your, your input was spot on. Okay, um, let's see, where are we? We are now.
Let's vote. Who?
Backs number two.
What today?
Okay, we're missing some commissioners, but I think we have a forum, so I think we should move ahead. And so we have to elect a chairman, a vice chairman, and a secretary. And I think we've done that all separately in the past. I'll take the easy one out right now. And I would like to recommend Rheta as our secretary moving forward.
I'll second that. Do you accept?
You good with that? Do we have to vote on this? I guess we do, right?
I think we do.
I believe so.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I thought we, we already did.
No, you just.
I think you did. Are you allowed to do it?
I, my, it was my suggestion.
Okay, well, I'll make the motion.
You moved right along.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? What, what was that?
Congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
She didn't take me out.
Moving right along to chairperson. I would like to go ahead and suggest that Jean Anne be our new chairman for the next, is it two years?
I think it's one.
Or one year?
One year.
It's one.
Yeah.
So moved.
How do you feel?
If Hill is interested in stepping down, I am happy to step into his shoes. I am curious if I get a reader, though. Is that like an amendment I can do? Because you read a lot. There's a lot of, like, verbal reading out loud.
I don't know if that's allowed.
Can I put that in? If, if, if Hill's ready to step down, I'm happy to accept.
Well, I shared with Jean Anne some comments, actually from town council. And you had stepped in the last meeting, and there's been several comments, very favorable in your opinion, towards you. So I think it's probably time. I think I've done this for fifty-six years now. So I think it's time to step down. So I would like to make a motion for Jean Anne to be our chairperson for the next year.
I can second that.
Yep, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Fantastic.
Congratulations. Well, thank you.
You can even use the, can I still use the gavel?
I don't know, let's see who vice chairperson is.
I have had a chance to talk to Jennifer, and she is bound and determined not to be a.
So just so you know, I had six years.
I know you did.
I, I have paid my time, more than anybody in this room.
So, so since Felix is here, and Mike, you're here, any interest in either one of you?
I would, I'd nominate you, Felix.
Are you interested, Felix?
All right, power team, here we go.
All right, so I'll make a motion to nominate Felix to be our vice chair for the next year.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Congratulations.
Great.
And if you want, you can have the gavel.
Means you guys are going to have to switch your seats now.
Oh, goodness, I know, but I do like the gavel.
I get to sit on the end, the rowdy side now?
You definitely can sit on the rowdy side, you've earned it.
You and Tom can sit together.
All right.
Please note that. Are we looking for any more commissioners? Are we looking to hire any more? Hire, being an interesting term.
Points, yeah, but, yeah.
A point.
Is that something that you all would want?
Yes. Do we, I feel like we could, we've gotten to the point a couple of times where we've had very low numbers.
I'm chuckling about the one meeting, it was just Mark and I.
How many members do we currently?
So we have seven.
Seven. Yeah, I mean, I think you need nine at least, well.
And we've been that high before.
We have been that high before. Just keep in mind, if we have that, we need a higher quorum, higher amount of people to hold.
Because with seven, we need four. With nine, we need five.
So my, my thoughts on that is, besides the one meeting that you and Mark ran, I thought we've been doing fairly well with seven. And my vote would be to keep it at seven. But that's just my opinion, and.
I vote that we have more. Because.
I'm still in charge, no, you're in charge.
The meeting hasn't closed, you're still in charge.
I, I'm still, I'm here, though.
Yeah.
I'm always in charge. I, I think that because a lot of times our planning commission members aren't here that long, they don't have the history. And if you're going to decide after your, your turn, you're like, I'm not doing this ever again, you're gone, right? And I like to have the cushion of history and knowledge, because we don't have that here at all.
That's a good point.
Well, you're, you've, you've been around a while.
Fifty-six years.
When did you start our commission?
I love other terms.
Didn't we start around the same time?
No.
You started right before you had a baby.
I started in twenty sixteen.
Right, like you.
I've been here eight years, eight and a half.
So is that right? Were you not pregnant? You were not?
No, I was not pregnant. I had just bought my house. I'd only bought my house. I moved to Christiansburg a month.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been here eight and a half.
Yeah, and we can look that up. That'd be good to know.
But, I mean, I don't think it can hurt to have, to encourage more members of Christiansburg to be, express interest and apply to be on the private planning commission. I think the more, uh, different experiences, diverse opinions, questions, jobs, expertise people bring from the community, the better. I mean, if there's someone who's sitting here right now who's interested in applying, I think that they, if they want to have a voice, they should apply to be on the planning commission.
Sure.
So I, I mean, do, but I guess the question is too, sometimes I feel like we put a lot of effort, put the pressure on staff. I think we as planning commissioners should think about who do we know in the Christiansburg community? So does each person know one or two people that they could maybe encourage to consider? Right?
Sure.
Agreed.
That one, I spend a lot of my time in Budakht.
They would, I mean, they might also work here.
Right, but, yeah.
I can, I can think of a couple offhand.
And they do have to be town residents, correct?
Right.
Christiansburg, yeah.
Yep.
And they need to be interested in the town and the growth of our town. That's the key, right?
But I think that's the best way that we get folks, like invested, long-term people, is by kind of encouraging the folks that are within our, our sphere or community.
And we do have openings on the BZA as well, the board zoning.
Oh, do you? Okay. Board of zoning, okay.
So if you have anybody who might be interested in that.
Okay.
I know, I, I think I might know a couple I might ask.
Yeah.
Working with me in Budakht, but.
Yeah. That live in Christiansburg.
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be great, Felix.
I'll ask around.
Other, other business?
I did have, well, no, my audience is gone, so I, I was going to encourage, I'll just tell you, if you're interested in free tax support on Saturdays, every other Saturday starting February eighth at the Christiansburg Library, look at their website, you can come get your taxes done for free. I'm a tax, a fair certified VIDA tax volunteer. So if you make seventy thousand dollars or under, we will prepare your taxes for free. So if you know anybody who needs assistance with their taxes, have them to come in, we'd be happy to serve them. I did have a question about the hotel restrictions in, we can only talk about Christiansburg because that's the town. If you are a Blacksburg or Christiansburg resident inability to rent a hotel room in the area, now, I understand that a lot of that concern is that town residents are going to rent a hotel, throw a big party and destroy it because they don't want to destroy their house. But when we have had severe weather, power outages, ice, no heat, is there anything that we can do as a town, as commissioners, make a recommendation to town council, that there's an opportunity for exceptions that we can encourage? Are y'all familiar with what I'm talking about of this? And I feel like it's pretty ridiculous, because if I lose power, I need to bring my kids somewhere, especially if it's, and I have a personal experiences, but it definitely happened recently with some of our severe weather. Is there anything that we have, or is this just allowed to happen? Is this like a state law thing? Is there an ordinance?
I think it's a pri, it's a private decision, so.
And there's nothing that we can do?
I read the article in Roanoke Times about the one in Roanoke.
Yeah.
And I kind of felt like, I got the impression that, that was a policy that they had in place, and the people that, whoever had gone and, you know, to talk to them, to, to try to rent the room, the people that they talked to weren't empowered to change that policy. Once, of course, it hit the Roanoke Times or whatever, WDBJ, whatever it was, but I think the policy did get changed there, so.
Well, I can tell you, I personally experienced it in Roanoke this weekend, and it did not get changed.
Really?
I literally had a reservation, and we had to go find another place to sleep.
Oh, wow.
Because we were within fifty miles of Roanoke.
Which one was it? Well, tell me offline.
I'll tell you offline. I mean, I should tell you online, because that's why, but, but I, but it just made me think about specifically here in this area, that our citizens deal with this. Or also, I mean, there are situations where someone's, like, an unhealthy domestic abuse situation, if someone's looking for somewhere to go and they're denied housing because of a, I don't know, I just was curious if there's anything that we could do. So staff, I don't know, like Rheta, if there's anything that we could look at or even consider or bring forward to town council, I would, I'm not saying the hotels have to serve, but I would love to see if there's a way that we could have some recommendations for legitimate exceptions, which, I mean, anyone can come in and lie and throw a big party, but they also have your credit cards, so they'll just charge you. But I would like to figure out how we can serve our citizens better.
Well, I do know when VDOT has a big summer storm, I mean, a winter storm, and their